...becoming a project school. So we're very proud to be called by Teachers College, a project school.
How do you spell C A L K I N S? No U.
And she's been pretty much thirty, I'd say close to thirty-five years. Her work, the work of her mentor Donald Graves in New Hampshire. And it's really about the process of writing. As Dr. Andrew said, recognizing that you are an author, that writing is probably the strongest form of communication, of critical thinking in that part. So South Kingston really, in Rhode Island, has kind of led that way. And you know, it's always good to follow when you're successful. So we're very confident. Although in our subclaims, if you looked at our subclaims for written expression, we get some pretty high scores even compared to reading literary and reading informational. So it is interesting that our students are able to communicate, whether it's a short response, constructive response, but yet they're not at the level that we want. But we're moving in that right direction, so that's positive. Thank you.
I was just struck by what you said, the head of the English department at the high school had its teachers take the test. And I wonder, it seems like that would be a really good idea for all our teachers to do, and I wonder if that's something that we are thinking about changing towards.
I know that several of the schools have done that. They have an online practice test. Actually, parents can take it as well. So I know that several of them have done that. But what was, I think, very powerful about the high school English department is, right after they took it, they debriefed and they talked about what changes they need to make to their curriculum, and they made it right there on that day. All right, are you ready to move on and talk about math?
Please.
Okay. So again, I provide a slide for you that just says what is being assessed. And in each grade level, there's what they call major content. Those are the major skills and concepts for that grade. And then there's supporting content, and the mathematical reasoning, and then the modeling and applications. And those are the standards for mathematical practice, which are very different than our previous standards for math. And that's the higher level thinking piece of application. So we take a look at the results statewide. About thirty percent of the students met or exceeded, and in Bristol, Oregon, it was thirty-four point five-five percent. And I'll go through and provide a little more detail on what that looks like at each grade level. So here it is for the state. You can see how the students scored across the state at each grade level. And then this is a comparison of Bristol, Oregon to the state. So in grade three, we were twelve percent higher. In grade four, thirteen percent higher. Grade five, thirteen percent higher. Grade six, two percent lower. Grade seven, twelve percent higher. And grade eight, eleven percent higher. And you'll notice that the grade eight results for us do not include the students who took the Algebra I assessment. Their scores I'll show you in a minute. So these are the results for the state from the Algebra I, percentage of students at each level. And now I'll show you the comparison to Bristol, Oregon. So we have eighty-six percent of the students at KMS who took the Algebra I in grade eight were proficient. So I think that's pretty impressive.
What about now, how how the score?
Well, I'll take a look at that one. Yep, that one is only twenty-one percent. So what's interesting is those are students in grades nine, ten, and we went out, I'm not sure if we had any wanting grade level, but who took it later. So those are students that, you know, needed more time to prepare. And that is one of the advantages of Park, is they can take the Algebra I test after you've finished the course, whereas previously, D cap, you took the assessment at whatever grade you were in, and it didn't matter which courses you had or had not completed. So that is the area, though, that the high school will be looking at and strengthening. And then also, when we look at the geometry standards, the performance there, we have work to do in that area as well.
So just on one of those lines to the earlier question, this is where it's really important to look at the cohort data. So our assumption for next year, if we look at grade eight, the students who took grade eight math this year will be next year's Algebra I students. So even if we go back one year, the numbers were about the same. So only twenty-six percent of our students scored proficient in grade eight. Those are the same students in grade nine taking Algebra I. So if we look at Algebra I in grade nine, it's sixteen percent proficient. Those are the same students, as opposed to the students who took Algebra I in eighth grade, or the students who took Algebra or geometry in grade nine. So we do look at those, the access to an opportunity, we do look at that cohort data. But there are staggering points in that KMS of having a school within the school, and different expectations. But for years and years, we've been looking at cohort data and seeing a trajectory in elementary, three, four, and five, might be slight increases in the cohort, then we see a decrease in KMS, and then we see an increase to get back at the high school. So we do look at, again, going back to my goals of what is average response, intervention, guarantee of viability, and classroom instruction. So that's how we're going to bolster up some of this. But we do look at that cohort. What I do like about POGK, it does disaggregate grade eight Algebra I as opposed to grade nine Algebra I. We're able to really deep dive, really give kudos to KMS for eighty-six percent of the students who are proficient, which is a really nice number. What's happened in the KMS for that Algebra I and the same content, and that articulation between grade eight and grade nine?
I have a question. Those students at KMS who took the Algebra I, who took Algebra I, how many students are we talking about? Do we know?
We had approximately fifty-five students, fifty-five students.
And then so out of those fifty-five students, eighty-six of them met or exceeded expectations?
Yes, eighty-six percent.
Thank you.
Mrs. Santa, I still think that this reflects back on the academic rigor that isn't there. And I don't, I think I brought this up forever, but it's not there.
I agree.
And I don't find that acceptable.
And what we also noticed is, when we did classroom walkthroughs last year in the spring, one of the things that we noticed that we didn't see a whole lot of higher level questions being asked within the classrooms. So there are a number of indicators that are, you know, that we really need to look at and increase the rigor and increase expectations, and make sure that students have the opportunity to achieve as high as they can. So that is on the list for this year. So I'll just finish it up again, and this is just another comparison on how we did to the state. And then this slide is how we did in comparison to other districts. This first slide is the elementary level. And the second slide is the middle school level. And this last slide is the high school. And now, on a little bit lighter note, we always like to be able to celebrate gains, even though we do acknowledge the work that we have to do. This is a representation of the gains that we were noted for in ELA at each school. And again, you'll notice the scores that are in green are the ones that were noted by RIDE for significant improvement. So we still have more work to do, we know that, but the students that made some gains, like you, Cole, I was telling you earlier about their staff meeting and really reflecting on what made those gains possible, and you know, the work the high school has been doing. Cole Andrews also had some impressive gains. So it gives, we have to make sure that we do celebrate the good work that teachers are doing, and the schools, and the students. And next, we'll take a look at the gains in math. And again, Rockwell was noted for their increase. And Cole Andrews had a strong increase as well.
So in regard to Rockwell's score, what do they attribute that to?
They attribute that to the I-Reddy Math Program. So that's an online learning program that begins with a baseline assessment for students, and then it adapts instruction to where the students are and the areas that they need supporting. And we try to get our students online to use the assessment a certain number of hours per week. And Rockwell had several grades that completed those hours and then exceeded them and went beyond. And also, teachers were incorporating I-Reddy into their workshop model. They were differentiating instruction, face-to-face instruction. So if you ask a Rockwell teacher or the principal, they would tell you their I-Reddy played a big part.
Were they the only school that utilized I-Reddy?
No, all of our schools use I-Reddy, and the students had access to it even during the summer. But it was just particularly for them because they were so focused on it. Last year, we actually had some teachers who did actual research around the use of I-Reddy, which was interesting, and it inspired the rest of the staff to use it more. So if it's implemented with fidelity, it does work very well. Some of our schools had some barriers related to technology. K through two classrooms that are not one-to-one would have to either go down and use a computer lab, which was not always convenient, especially at some of our larger schools where they have to go for a very long walk. And then, you know, the equipment, the technology in the classrooms is not what we would like it to be. So few instances of some barriers. Sometimes it's just the teachers not yet realizing the power of technology to differentiate instruction, but we're getting there. And I think that through our elementary math coaches, who are well-versed in I-Reddy and have done presentations around the New England area, they are working with those teachers to make sure that they do see the power of it. They're also showing the data to teachers so that they can see the difference in classrooms where they have a high usage, they have a higher achievement. So we're getting there, but we've got some good examples that it does make a difference.
I don't need to keep asking questions, but so are we going in the direction of using that whole Google Docs kind of idea with math? I know that I've heard some really good comments from our teachers that when they give a writing assignment, the teacher can't look in real time to see what the kids are writing, respond. Are we going in that direction with math, or is that not appropriate?
No, I think that would absolutely be appropriate. So Google Docs would allow a teacher to assign students a word problem, for example, have them work in small groups. Students would be able to comment on each other's strategies, and the teacher could be looking in into each of those docs and be able to see, as you say, in real time what the student's doing, and also provide feedback to the student in real time. So I know that that's happening, and then I also know that we've had a couple of teachers on our digital learning teams doing work around that. And it's all about the technology gives you the opportunity to provide that instant feedback to students. Okay, let's see where we are. And Cole, do you have a question?
It's actually kind of more of a comment about something you said, because I feel like in the ten years I've been on the school committee, that I, we've heard a very similar comment over the years, the fact that this school committee has put a ton of resources behind computers. I mean, we really have put a lot of money toward it. And we've talked often about the fact that we still have some teachers that are not grasping on to, and I, and I listened to you talk about, you know, we're having coaches come in to talk to them and showing them data, and, you know, to see why it's so important that they hop on board with all of this that we're providing for this district. And I feel like we've been hearing this for a lot of years. And I think that when do you get to a point where you say, and maybe this is a discussion for another day, contract negotiations discussion, but when do you get to a point where you say, you know what, we've been waiting for ten years for you to embrace what we have, you know, the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of technology that we have, that we have put into this district, and the teachers that are doing what they're supposed to be doing and seeing all these great gains, when do we get to a point where we say, either you jump on board, or you jump off board? So I mean...
With just with the I-Reddy program, all teachers are using it, but you bring up a very good point. Some have embraced it more fully, and they're seeing the results, and their students are benefiting. And that's where I think colleague to colleague, and having the data to show that it makes a difference, and then also the principals support in pointing that out when they report some of it. One of the things that we've tried to do is to stay focused on just a few tools and applications, because you really have to make sure that teachers see the benefit, because there are so many choices out there. So we try to make sure that we're careful embedding the products that we do into our teachers' classrooms, so that, again, there isn't the argument that it's just technology, or it's just fun, or it's just practice. We really want them to see the value within that. But, you know, you bring up a very good point, that we need to make sure that all students have access to classrooms that are using technology effectively.
Well, we had this discussion in relation to smart boards. You know, I mean, we still have teachers in this district that won't use a smart board, or they won't use this, or they won't use that. And again, it, to me, it gives an advantage to one student that another whole classroom is not, is not getting. All I'm saying is, is that I absolutely agree with everything you're doing and saying and trying to push people along to get on board, but I feel like this is a discussion that we have had everybody for years. I mean, and when do you get to a point where somebody's just not coming on board, and they're just, I mean, waiting for their twenty-five years, or however many, Gina Orlando says they have to work on?
Right, it's interesting, and that's one of the reasons why we started the digital learning team, so they're right in the building, and teachers are going into these classrooms and seeing the skill. And this year, we had twenty-five openings and forty-three applicants, and many of them are more experienced teachers that really weren't using technology to its fullest. So I do think that it's growing, but I agree with you that it's not growing fast enough to make sure all students benefit.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, be careful, because in the last ten years, we've had the great gains in this district. And our teachers have been excellent partners and moving the district forward. So I don't want the perceptional there that there's nothing going on, because a lot of the work and gains that have happened in the district are because of our teachers and pushing our administration. And I think, again, when we have these conversations with, well, technology, technology's a tool. And so we've made investments, whether in laptops or smart boards, but again, it goes back to whether it's my four central questions or the four instructional strategies, what are the standards, what have been the changes in the last five years in student expectations in writing? And I think there's a lot more job of better professional development. So whenever we're a professional learning community 24/7, we have much more of an urgency now to be results-oriented and using actual research, so that we can document which worked and if it's not working. And I don't want to just say that this happens in Bristol, Oregon, but it's around the country, that we, education in general does a really bad job on documenting or memorializing successes, so that we can scale up. There's a lot of pockets of excellence, whether it's in Bristol, Oregon, or South Kingston, or, you know, districts in the state of Washington. But it's really hard to take something and expand. And I think we're doing that through actual research in partnership with some great educators in the classroom. And so that's where we're at, that, you know, as much as we've spent on technology, we're spending a lot more money on the infrastructure, so that the Wi-Fi is on, they're giving students. And then there's a great researcher out there, Richard Elmore out of Harvard, and he talks about us, and we've been doing that, on if we're going to hold students and teachers accountable for more, that it's our responsibility to build a capacity. And I think we're doing that by hiring more coaches, driving better professional development, DLTs. And then it is when we see that ownership, that we're seeing that escalation, because the teachers know, and the students know, they have clear expectations, they provide models of strong and weak work, of what does a model classroom look like, what does good facilitation look like, what's good questioning look like, and I think we're getting more comfortable. We're at that point right now. We have been saying it, and I think this is almost like eight years, nine years in this, so I've been setting up, they're presenting the data, saying we're going to get better and better. And we're yeah, trying to crack that code, and it's really hard in math, quite honestly. It is changing that mind frame, and it's about that writing expectations. But it is going back to my goals of that guarantee, what is that guarantee of viability? Do we have enough, especially six through twelve, a strong enough understanding on the educator side of where are those content standards, and how do you transfer the ownership of the students, so that they know what does this given mean, and how can they apply that knowledge independently? We do a lot of handholding, we've talked about this in years before, that, you know, Mrs. Schofield, I'll help you with daddy answer, and charge work on, and do this, and now it's time for a test, and the kids freeze. So the high school over the last couple of years have been remarkable on on-demand tasks. You have forty-five minutes to write. You can ask anybody, here's your prompt, and do it. It was just a real simple strategy, and you see the results. So we're moving in that regard, and I agree, but I just want to acknowledge the great work of our educators in the last ten years, and they've been using that investment, but we're moving forward.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand the vast majority of our staff, and that's why it's so exciting when we get to see it modeled here, when we go into a classroom. It's so exciting when we get to see the great things that are happening around the district, and just how, again, I just think you need to, everybody should be doing it, you know? I mean, there should just, should be no exceptions. So I just think you get to a point, whether, you know, you're going to hop on board or you're not. But yes, absolutely, the vast majority of our staff is doing amazing, things in technology that I don't even understand. And my kid just graduated.
Or me, obviously.
Two months ago. I mean, it's terrible. But yes, I absolutely did not want to imply that.
I just have a few slides to finish up. We want to make sure that we're using the Park results to their fullest. For families and the school report, the student reports will be going home this week. For families, it provides information to engage in conversations with their children or to engage in conversations with their teachers regarding the child's progress. For teachers, it gives them some data to reflect on changes in instruction that they've made, to see if they see the difference in performance. For schools, they're able to look at patterns across classrooms and grade levels to inform instructional decisions. And at the district level as well, we can look for patterns in the data, and that helps us to plan for curriculum initiatives and supports and services to students. We want to always...
Mrs. Santa?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
How do we get put into the Johnston, Carver, Tree, Lincoln group? What makes us similar to them? Is it the population?
Population, yes.
Similar demographics.
I really think that we should be raising our goal levels here. And I think, because I have, I have all of the districts, and I really think that when I'm looking at their results, I'm not impressed with any of their results.
We're not satisfied with ours either. So, but we're looking at similar demographics, and, you know, there's people saying, why aren't we comparing to that one to these friends? So we look at the same size district, the same SES, the same, you know, those demographics, and so that's what our comparison is pointing. But if you look at the high school in, you know, grade ten ELA, we were ranked number one, two, three, four. So we were behind Wood Smith Field.
I can see that.
Rockwell is in the top ten in both ELA and math as a school. So we still perform higher than many districts in isolation, but as a district, we're just looking at those demographics, and that's why we chose those. We should be, as a district, in the top eight, top five, we'll go.
Are we looking at where we are compared to the other states that participated in Park? Are we looking at that at all?
I don't have that data for you this evening. I haven't, not seen that come out of RIDE yet, but we can certainly share that when it does come out.
It's on the individual student reports, when we get the whole, they'll say how, on an average, how the other parks, states did, how the student compares to other students in Rhode Island, and then their individual, their district. So it's on the student reports.
How their child...
Compared to all the states.
To all the states. We see examples of that at some point.
Sure.
Mrs. Santa, just one more thing. I think what Karen was referring to was way back when, each, each elementary school did its own thing. And one of the things that the school committee's been looking at across the years has been the need to make sure that the curriculum is the same in each individual school, which is part of Mario's goal. But part of that would be what you were talking about in terms of what are you using in each school? So if I had you, Cole, and I go to Rockwell, am I going to be as comfortable in Rockwell as I was with you, Cole? My teaching strategy may be a little different, but am I going to be on the same level? And I think that's the concern, and has been the concern all along.
Yep, so we do have a consistent curriculum across all of our grades and all of our schools, and that's something that we monitor through classroom walkthroughs and hold the teachers accountable to staying within the scope and sequence. As far as instructional resources, we're also very careful to make sure that all teachers have access to the same resources and quality resources that are aligned to the standards. Teachers do still have, you know, the flexibility to pull in additional resources that they feel would, you know, better meet the needs of their students, or to supplement what we give them. But that is something that we do promote. Like you said, sometimes they'll use different strategies, and that's the next piece that we want to look at. We want, not that it needs to be a cookie cutter approach by any means, but we want to make sure, to ensure that all teachers have the training and support needed to provide those in-depth strategies, and also, like we said earlier, to hold, to have high expectations for student performance.
Right. Mrs. Santa?
Yes.
I'm wondering, do you have, like, are the Rockwell teachers mentors to other teachers in our district, people like elementary, elementary? Do we have mentorships where that would possibly help the other schools pull themselves up?
Yep, we don't have mentorships, but we do have district grade level planning, and teachers from each school, including Rockwell, are involved in developing the curriculum and identifying instructional resources, so their voices are definitely heard. And I know on several occasions, Rockwell teachers have brought in binders and resources and things that they've done. So we always have that opportunity for that collaboration across the schools, and that's really a very effective professional learning tool.
Hey, you know how you have in middle school, you have the teams? Could there be teams between the elementary teachers in various schools?
We have grade level teams that meet on a regular basis. Is that what you mean? Is that what you mean?
Pretty much, but so what you're saying is there are teachers from each of the schools that are elementary schools meeting as a group?
Yes, when we rolled out our E L A curriculum last year, we had several sessions that Ms. Almeida facilitated. And we had we have all of the fifth grade teachers together at one time and reviewing the curriculum units and the standards within there and talking about effective practice. And that's an opportunity for teachers to share what they're doing. And especially um, Ms. Almeida knows when to highlight certain teachers in classrooms that are doing exemplary things and she'll ask them to share their practices. So we do that, we've done that for all of the subject areas. And this year, we'll be doing that. We do our coaching for science and we do our coaching for writing. So we also have some cross-school advisory teams that help guide the process. Do you want to add some more?
No, I don't know if the school committee has ever looked at the K through eighth grade and even the high school, E L A curriculum. So last year was really the first year that they fully implemented an E L A standards-based curriculum. And part of the year, I believe Diane, four at least, minimumly four, each grade level from K through eighth grade had instructional planning time. And during that time, they really looked at the standards that were in each of those units, the standards across the year, that whole scope and sequence. They also looked at how they could integrate their science curriculum so that some of the units are both focused on content such as social studies and science. And that's so necessary, that integration, because you can't do it all in a six-hour day. It's just too much. So there was a lot of integration in these units. I believe they're very strong, they're very standards-based. The area that we had noted that teachers felt less confident was really the instructional writing piece. But for each of those units in a team from Rockwell, from Hugh Cole, from Colt Andrews and Gutierrez, they developed these lessons that focused on unpacking the standards, as Dr. Andrew said, and formative assessments, those assessments that really inform their daily instruction. The other piece, one that we didn't have as much time, but we are looking at this year, are the summative assessments. So at the end of that unit, if I have met these standards, how do I demonstrate that? How do I show evidence? Because it's really about that piece, what can I do independently? And I have to say, there's a great collegiality and collaboration between teachers from schools. It is not the Rockwell teachers nor the Gutierrez teachers. They really come together and there is this strong sense of, we want to do the best for all kids. Um, and I really think that that's magical to see. And Diane, certainly, and Dr. Andrew, it sometimes comes in and visits. And they're excited about their work. There's a certain level that it is the eighth year, starting the eighth year for me and for you too, Dr. Andrew. Um, and I don't think I've seen that level of, I just excitement about what they're doing. So we did have to make a few changes to align with the writing. In Hawkins, we had a team, a district leadership writing team, really look at our current E L A units and how well they would align. So if we were doing a unit on opinion writing, formative writing, and opinion and formative, and narrative writing, which all grades get a five star with narratives, how well did it align? So that you're not teaching, you're not, it's more connected so that the E L A reading and the writing are really supporting one another. So that piece, teachers looked at. Uh, when we had the experts from Teacher College come down, they only had a few concerns with K and second grade. We're looking at that. We wanted to be really grassroots from the teachers to say, this is not going to work here in trimester two. We're going to need to move it to trimester three and swap the units. But I think it would be really beneficial for you to have access or if we post that curriculum, which is part of the plans, for you to look at those units and what that looks like. Just like with the Park, that students are going to take the assessment. You would get to see what does an assessment look like at the end of a unit for a kindergarten? And what does it look like for a fifth grade? Um, so I think those pieces, really seeing that confidently is important. And we are working on rigor, always up to the rigor. It's never rigorous enough. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just um finish up by reminding everyone that Park is only one snapshot of a child's achievement. We also want to be looking at the other competencies that are important, such as critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity. Uh, we also have a balanced, comprehensive assessment where we also use our local assessment data and our classroom assessments to really understand what students' achievement looks like and their learning needs. And then, just to wind down, next steps for improvement. I've talked about some of this already where we will continue to do our classroom walkthroughs to look at the alignment of instruction and consistency in instructional expectations. Um, also the work that um Ms. Anderson has been doing with N C I I and the R T I process. We're supporting all students. We'll be looking at achievement gaps for separate populations as well, such as E L L, low income and special education. Um, as I mentioned previously, the middle school will be looking very closely at grade six and analyzing data from CART and our local assessment star to strengthen the alignment of instruction and assessment to the standards. And that gets back to the rigor and high expectations. And then just the very last slide, how the results are being used by schools. Um, schools have different evenings where they'll be presenting the results to families and also sharing them with their staff, looking at them during grade level meeting times or departmental meeting times and really analyzing them and looking at the correlation to our local assessment data and our classroom expectations. So that's pretty much what we have been conceiving. And again, the focus is always on continuous improvement as we learn more about the expectations and the types of assessments that our students are expected to take on. We like carefully about what the learning looks like in the classroom and what we need to be better with. So any final questions? Mrs. Wayne, right?
So under how the results are being used by the schools at Mount Quo, you have teachers who review the reports with students. Is that done on an individual basis or as a class and then kind of a general overview of this is what this report looks like and this is what it means?
I believe that it's done during advisory time. So that's a time when students go and they meet with one teacher that they worked closely with. It's about fifteen to one ratio and that's that time for that personalization to look at them. Um, some schools also do it through meetings with the guidance council, but it is on an individual basis, certainly not on a group basis.
My last question, under next steps for improvement, where it states support families in better understanding of grade level standards and ways to help their child at home, sharing resources. How is that information in regard to ways to help their child at home sharing resources? How is that communicated to those parents?
I know our math coaches have sent out a lot of information and they have a website with parent resources. Our school newsletters typically include those links and that information. Classroom teachers as well send home information to families. So at the district level, we try to share all of those resources. And as we find new ones, we make them available to families. So they're shared through our teacher meetings, at school level meetings. Um, so there really is a lot of information going on, but a lot of it is from the classroom teachers and at the school level.
I think this is a good question. Um, I'm wondering too, a little bit about parent involvement in this. So like I know, because I get this course home, that it comes with a sheet explaining how needed and what your child might need to focus on going forward, what they sort of master or are proficient at at this point. Um, but I'm wondering how, is there, I know it sounds like um the teachers and administration and everyone look at this course kind of as a whole at different grade levels and in the classrooms. And I'm wondering, is there a point at which teachers and parents have a discussion about the course of action for individual students? And would that, if that does happen, is that at every level? Or is this more of, we're using these to look at the big picture?
Um, they are discussed at the individual student level. So through parent-teacher conferences, that would be a time where they might be discussed. This year, the timing was a little bit tricky for us with them coming out right at the beginning of the school year, but certainly that would be an opportunity. And then also for students who are below proficiency, most likely the teacher would be reaching out to the parent to discuss supports. Within the response to intervention process, parents are also involved. So those would be where those discussions would take place.
One more quick follow-up to that. Are these particular scores looked at at the middle and high school level where placement is considered? Are you, or is it, do you know what I mean by that? Like when you were saying that you have this achievements, for example, in your program? Or is this, does this play into that? It's part of the whole comprehensive assessment?
That's exactly. Yeah, it's more of a street profile. So this is only one data point. So we'll look at, again, the ramifications of the classroom teacher, I Ready or other information. But this is a sole determination on what pathway a student may or may not be on. We also don't use PARK for retention purposes either, so.
But it is part of the data?
It's a data point. Yeah, so we want to make sure there's a cross-correlation. If a student, say at the middle school is, when their report gets Ds and Fs and then on PARK is scored fours and fives, we want to say, why is there, you know? Or the inverse happens, that the student's getting a one or two or a standardized test and they get a Ds and Bs in the classroom, what's going on there as well? So it's just a data point that leads to further conversation.
So, Dr. Andre, in regard to a data point, do we then look at the SAT scores that our students are getting in writing and in reading to see if that is as high as our PARK scores or prior to that, our NECAP scores?
Yep, in the past, we do that. We also look at, Ms. Copeland was really, took a lot of time in a database. We will look at students' P S A T, S A T, NECAP scores, if they were in AP. So we look at all those to see if there was actually alignment and then their student rate. So we would have multiple conversations on that over the years. So, any other comments? Seeing now, I'd like to thank you, Diane and me. Thank you very much for great presentation and answering our questions with great detail. Okay, now a motion to adjourn me.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, second to the right, Mr. Price, all of them.
Aye.
All of those. Thank you, have a good night.